We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We have our invitation by Reverend Glenda Brayman, Pastor St. James United Methodist Church. Reverend Brayman, Councilor, please stand.
Father God, as we gather here tonight, we ask your blessings to be upon our leadership, our community, and we lift up our praise and our thanksgiving for these young people, Lord, who were called Students of the Month. Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over them, guide them, and lead them to the future you would have them to go. And, Lord, we ask now that you would join us tonight, help us to make the right decisions, guide us in our decision-making, and be with us throughout this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call, please.
Mayor Hines.
Here.
Vice President Brown, Red.
Commissioner. President.
Commissioner Campbell.
President.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
All members of President McCaskill's board and his number four.
Let's everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes from February 7th.
Sorry, February 13th.
13th. On the February 13th, we have...
Second.
Motion on the floor, a second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public recognition. I have several. First up, this proclamation for Azalea Days Downtown Palaca Inc. Is there a representative for DPI here? Any members? There's one shaking their head in the back. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on March 22nd, 1936, the Palaca Floor Committee held a local flower and plant show at the Ravine Garden, which was named Azalea Festival. At the suggestion of Miss Susie Walton, a member of the committee, also on March 22nd, 1936, thousands of shriners from all over the southeastern United States participated in the first annual All Florida Shrine Day, also held at the Palaca Ravine Gardens. This event was such a huge success, it returned to the Ravine Gardens the following year and was held in conjunction with the Junior Chamber of Commerce, this JC's Day, Southeastern Conference, also held at Ravine Gardens. And whereas in 1938, JC's changed the name of the event to the Azalea Festival, held at the gardens in conjunction with the All Florida Shrine Day and included a beauty pageant. On February 20th, 1938, Miss Geraldine Moyer of St. Petersburg was chosen from a field of 10 contestants and crowned the first Azalea Queen. Whereas throughout the years, 63 women have been crowned Azalea Queen or Miss Azalea. As the title became known, the pageant, a qualifier for the Miss Florida competition, has seen two of its queens crowned Miss Florida, and one, Miss Tardon Holland, was also crowned as Miss America in 1997. And whereas throughout the years, the JC's Azalea Festival always held in early March in conjunction with the Shrine Day, and the Azalea Queen Pageant grew and changed and was held annually, except for three years during World War II, and six years during the 1950s until the JC's was disbanded after the 1996 Azalea Festival. And whereas in 1997, the Putnam County Scholarship Foundation took over sponsorship of the festival and kept the tradition of the festival throughout 2003 festival season. In 2005, the Palaca Main Street Board of Directors trademarked and named the organization the 59th Annual Palaca Azalea Festival. The 2020 Palaca Azalea Festival organized by Downtown Palaca Inc. marks the 74th festival held, which makes it the oldest festival in Florida, one of the oldest festivals in Florida. Now therefore, I tarrel hill, together with members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim March 6th through 8th, 2020, as the 74th Annual Florida Azalea Festival Days in the city of Palaca, where we are, y'all, citizens, to take part in the plan, events, fun, and festivities of this one-of-a-kind, Florida's oldest and most time-honored festival. To thank us organizers, but pass and present for their hard work and contribution to our communities, history, and heritage, and witness whereof, I'm here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palaca, Florida, on this 27th day of February in the year by our Lord, 2020, Tarrel Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill Commissioners. So move. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Let me present this to you.
It's now called developed Palaca Inc., instead of Downtown Palaca Inc., but we've just changed that. And we also have Downtown Palaca experiences. So DPI and DPE really appreciate the city of Palaca backing us and giving us such support. We do have almost 100 vendors this year already signed up, so it's going to be really one of the better ones that we've had, and next year will be the Diamond Jubilee because it's the 75th anniversary. So we do have a lot more food vendors this year, in case some of you might have thought that was kind of on the slim side last year, so you'll have a lot more to choose from. Okay? And we appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up, colorectal cancer awareness week. Ms. Garcia. Whereas the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Cancer Research Foundation of America, and the American Digestive Health Foundation, and the White House have joined together to encourage Americans to observe March 2020 as National Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month to encourage 80% of adults, 50 in older, to get screened by 2020. Whereas colorectal cancer is the second most common cancer diagnosed in men and women in the U.S. Every three minutes, someone's diagnosed with colon cancer, and every 10 minutes, a life is lost to this disease. The risk of colon cancer increases with age. Nine out of 10 cases occur in people over 50 years old, and the likelihood is greater for people of African-American or Eastern European descent, and those with bowel disease or family history of colorectal cancer. And whereas 1/3 of viridians above 50 do not receive annual screenings for colorectal cancer, symptoms can include stomach pain, aches, or cramps. They do not go away, and weight loss without a known cause, yet in many cases have no symptoms, especially early on, when it can be prevented or more effectively treated. So it's crucial for people to get regular screenings, which are now covered by most health insurance plans for adults ages 50 to 75 at no cost to the patient. And whereas the Florida Department of Health and Senior Services, the Bureau of Cancer Control in partnership with Florida Cancer Consortium, the American Cancer Society, and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention remain committed and dedicated to inform the public about colorectal cancer prevention and screening. Now therefore, I tarrel hill mayor, the city of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of this Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse, declare, and designate the month of March 2020 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Palaca, and hereby urge citizens of Palaca to observe the month by contacting the Putnam County Health Department to inquire about colon cancer screening programs available locally, as well as any other information regarding the prevention and control of colorectal cancer. And witness whereof, I'm here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palaca, Florida, on this 27th day of February in the year by our Lord, 2020, Tarrel Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill Commissioners. So move. Second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Let me present this to you.
Stand up one, huh? You know. Probably. I just want to thank you. You take such efforts at being able to present this proclamation every year. It's so important to get screened. We talk about screening ages, and as you get older, how important it is. I also, the Health Department does have the ability to find resources for certain age groups, so please call the Health Department for those. I also will pull in to plug in for the Putnam First Cancer Fund that was started by a few of us, very dedicated members who wanted to make sure that funding was not a deterrent to get screened. It's really important, so eligibility and lack of funding is not an issue. You would get screened by the Christian Service Center in Palaca and then referred to the Putnam First Cancer Fund if you don't have the funds to be able to get screened for pretty much all cancers. So I want to make sure that you're aware of that, and our citizens are aware of that, that we've got an incredible resource in Putnam County that we need for you to avail yourselves of. Last year, we had over 75 people approach us for help, not just for colorectal cancer, but other types of cancer, and we've done an incredible, we haven't turned one soul away. So just wanted you to know that.
Next up, Brain Awareness Week, March 16th through 22nd, Palaca Pilot Club. Ms. Gerger. Retired?
Retired.
Only for a while.
Here we go. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Palaca Pilot Club is one of more than 300 clubs chartered throughout Pilot International, a global organization of executive business and professional leaders working to improve the quality of life in local communities throughout the world. And whereas Pilot International's focus on service to people affected by brain-related disorders was adopted in 1990, since then, approximately 25,000 adult and youth members have been working together to increase awareness and raise funds for programs associated with this focus. And whereas Pilot International provides guidance and encouragement to our communities through sponsorship of activities which increase public awareness of the advances and benefits of brain research. And whereas Pilot International awards grants and scholarships supporting students pursuing vocations in brain health and safety. And whereas Pilot Clubs join other brain awareness weeks in order to provide information about diseases affecting more than 150 million adults and children. This international effort includes hospitals, schools, government agencies, and community groups working together to expand the interest in the brain, brain research, and brain-related disorders. Now therefore, I tarrel hill mayor of the city of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of March 16th through 22nd, 2020, as Brain Awareness Week in the city of Palaca, calling this observance to the attention of our citizens and urging all citizens to express their support and recognition of this effort by the Pilot Club of Palaca and the Pilot Club International. And witness whereof, here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palaca, Florida, on this 27th day of February in the year by our Lord, 2020, Tarrel Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill Commissioners. So move. There's a motion, authority, second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Pilots are all about brains, and guess what? Every single person in this room has a brain. Take care of yourselves, and we're having a fundraiser April 20th that we will use to promote brain health throughout our county, and Bongo is fun. Things that you do that are fun are also good for your brain. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Keep Putnam Beautiful, Mr. Cole Grace. Is Ms. Grace here? In any regards, we'll go ahead and do this for the countywide cleanup. Whereas Keep Putnam Beautiful, the local affiliate of Keep America Beautiful, is an organization that works to inspire, educate, and educate, to take action every day to improve beauty in their community environment and in visions of Putnam County where every community is a green, clean, and beautiful place to live. And whereas Palaca Pride, the locally-based grassroots movement championed by the city of Palaca City Commission, the police, code enforcement, and public works that has brought public and private sectors together to develop and to promote a citywide cleanliness ethic through organized and targeted trash collection, unification, and renewal drives. And whereas both, thank you, whereas both Keep Putnam Beautiful and Palaca Pride have partnered together to promote programs that engage individuals through coordinated efforts and programs to renew parks, trails, and recreation areas, and clean up shorelines and waterways, remove litter and debris, reduce waste, and increase recycling, plant trees, flowers, and community gardens in order to inspire the new generation of community stewards who will take a greater responsibility for improving their community's environment. And whereas Keep Putnam Beautiful and the Palaca Pride have worked with more than 1,000 local volunteers and 60 groups to pick up trash through neighborhood fix-up and cleanup drives throughout Palaca and Putnam County. And whereas Keep Putnam Beautiful, with an area of concern covering all of Putnam County, is organizing private citizens, county, municipal business, civic organizations to come together to support and donate resources and volunteers to participate in the KPB Countywide Cleanup on March 14th, 2020. Now therefore, I tarrel hill mayor of the city of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim March 14th, 2020, as Keep Putnam Beautiful Countywide Cleanup Day in the city of Palaca. We call upon the Putnam County Board of County Commission, the cities of Crested City and Interlagin and Towns, Pomona Park, and Willaca to issue like proclamations encouraging and urging citizens, organizations, businesses, and civic groups to support this event and to do their part to participate in this event by donating time, money, resources, talent to make Putnam County a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. And witness whereof, here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palaca, Florida, on this 27th day of the year by our Lord, 2020, Tarrel Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Justin Campbell, Rufus Borum, and Tammy McCaskill Commissioners. So move. Second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Commissioners, Mayor, Speaker, and Council, thank you. Thank you very much. We're very excited for the cleanup. I know we had one today, actually, a little early, down at the Rodman area, and there was a lot of garbage to pick up, but we were happy to do it, and we had fabulous time. I actually found a dollar. So you can make money at the city. Please, everyone, come out. Palaca is a beautiful city, and we just want to clean it up just a little bit more in college, so thank you very much. Okay, and to register for the cleanup, actually contact me directly on Facebook through our email address, keepputnambeautiful@gmail.com, or call me at the office at 352-9598, or just stop me at Publix or Walmart. I'd love to get you signed up.
Thank you.
Just one other thing. Nicole is getting ready to start going to the schools. I think there's four of them on her agenda.
Yes.
And she is going to be teaching the youngins classes on recycling and how to keep the city a beautiful place.
Good, thank you. And so, as a part of the cleanup, reading up countywide cleanup, one of the goals is always to have at least 500 volunteers countywide to take part in this. So the county's broken down into sectors. You all can participate. The only thing you have to do is make, is just come out and clean up on your own street. And so, for this cleanup, we want 500 volunteers. You can either call Keep Putnam Beautiful to log in, or you can log in on Facebook, and that way, we can make sure that we continually have participation throughout. Over the last few years, we've had over 600 people participate in these one-day events, and there's well over 10,000 pounds of trash collected in an early morning session, between 8:00 and 12:00 in the morning. So again, guys, everyone plays an important role in this, and so, there's an old song that says, "Sweep around your own front door," so everybody take a chance. Take this opportunity on that day, on March 14th, and clean up just around your area, and you'll make a difference in this community. So again, thank you. All right, that does it for our proclamation. Student of the month is canceled. So if you're here for student of the month, you can leave now. No, just maybe one person leaves. No, we're gonna go ahead and proceed. This is one of the great times for us. It's an opportunity for us to really say thank you to a lot of different folks. Commissioner Borum's gonna help me out this week, this month, but the first group that we always want to say thank you to are our teachers and our administrators, who are usually at somewhere in these hallways. All too many times, they get complaints, and they never get thank yous for their sacrifices, and so we want to make sure that we all give them a round of applause and thank them for the work that they do. The next group is just as important, and it's all the family members and friends, grandparents, and neighbors who've all come here today to celebrate this event for our young people. And so, would you all just stand so that we can recognize you right now, because it takes the village to raise a child. So if you're here with one of these young folks, stand up for me. I can see one of our firefighters back here in the bathroom. So again, we just want to thank all of you guys for being here and supporting these young people. It's very important to have that adult influence in their lives, because it just makes all the difference in the world. Commissioner Borum, any directions before we get started?
All right, well, as he called, as he called a student up, and whoever's a representative of the school, we'll just have you line up around the front. We'll start over here at the end of the table, and just two by two, just come on back around. We'll shake the mayor's hand as you come up, and then I'll just hand you...
I don't know if you want to shake my hand.
You might not want to shake his hand today, but I'll just issue your certificate. So we thank you. That's all we have.
No coronavirus?
No coronavirus. He's just getting back from a trip.
So again, once we finish, we're gonna take a, we're gonna go ahead and take a recess and give you an opportunity, we're gonna take a picture for the newspaper, and then we're gonna take individual pictures for every student, so that you get an opportunity to memorialize this occasion, and so we want to make sure that we do that. So, we're gonna go ahead and start out, we're gonna call the names out. I'm gonna get myself shake-worthy. First up, Brownhurst Elementary's Michael Austin. For the record, I will destroy three names throughout this process. If I do, don't feel as though I'm picking them up. Seal over turf, sixth grade center, Stacy Lopez. Just making that grand entrance, just give her another round of applause.
All right. We could do better than that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
From Children's Reading Center Charter School, I'm gonna take it that she's related to Brent Myers, Paisley Myers. Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations.
From the H. Miller School, Tavon Kim.
My baby!
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Feel short. From Jane Day Long Elementary School, Lawrence Hutcherson. Congratulations, sir. Stroh Ripps. Jenkins Middle School, Samuel Dunham. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Kirk Hannah. From Mellon Elementary, Samantha Hansen. From Mosley Elementary, Tony Lamberty. From Pennant Baptist Academy, Jeremiah Sweet. I am Philip Shorter. This is the 6'2" date. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Chanel Campbell. From Putnam Edge, Esther Albino. From Palaca High, the young man with five dunks in a game, Malik Beaufort. Is that the most in one game? So he's probably had multiple five dunk games. So can you move so they can see me?
What about me?
Everybody's talking about me. We feel short now.
I know.
So guys, we are, we're just so happy to have you here. It's wonderful that we get a chance to celebrate you because of the great things that you're doing at school. Forty years ago, Ms. Green would teach us this every day in third grade, and I still say it to this day, and we start every day out by saying, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." You guys are somebody great. You're destined for greatness. You're doing wonderful things, and don't let anybody keep you off of that path. So again, we're proud of you, and we love you, and again, congratulations. So at this time, we're gonna stay in a recess. We're gonna work to the agenda, which is public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No act will be taken on topics of discussion during this public comment section. If you're here to speak on topics that are in the agenda, please fill out the yellow speaker's card as well, put your information on there, so we'll know exactly what it is you're speaking about. Anyone's here for general public comment, I don't have any speaker's cards for open public comment. Seeing no one here for general public comment, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment at this time, and move on to item three of the agenda, which is our consent agenda. Under consent agenda, we've got items A through E. Is there any item other than item C that you wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Motion to approve items A through E excluding C. This is a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question's called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3C, adopt Resolution 2020 R17, declaring identified city-owned real estate to be surplus and directing the city manager's disposal set properly in accordance with the city administrative procedures. Got two speaker cards on this issue. I'll call up first, Ms. Kittens.
Allegory Kittens, 1027 South Will Street, Palaca, Florida. I want to address two of your parcels, if you're looking, or actually, three of the parcels you're looking at selling. The first one is the lot in your package described as fronting on South 10th, South 11th, and close Laurel Street. This is the property that's next to the Ride Solutions property and close to the post office. I think you should keep this property, at least for the time being, because this is one of the locations that you all have talked about as a possible location for the new police, a new police station or moving public works. And I think that if you keep this, maybe in the future, it could be a possible place to move to city halls, so I think you need to keep that parcel. In addition, the two parcels on Morris Street, that they face Morris Street, they're basically on the corner of, one is on the corner of Morrison Kirby, and then the other one is right beside it, going back toward Krill Avenue. Back around the early 50s, there was one house on that property, close to Kirby Street. That property drops off into that ravine. That ravine is actually what surrounds Osceola Creek. Osceola Creek starts way up in the hill area on the other side of Hank Ryan Park. It runs down behind Hank Ryan Park. It goes under 13th Street, it comes, it comes back out, and runs all the way down, goes through that ravine area, behind the Lions Club, behind these lots, goes under Kirby Street, under Florida Furniture, comes back out through your Lip Station River Street, goes under River Street, and comes back out to the St. John's River. This is a flood-prone area, and the DOTs had a lot of trouble working on it, and they go down to this area, and they clean out the creek, and they're very conscientious about making sure that creek doesn't get locked up. The way that property is, I believe that a developer would have to put in fill to be able to build on that property. able to build on that property, even where that previous house was, which I think were down in the late 50s, early 60s. So I'm gonna ask you to keep those two lots on Morris Street and actually make them a little neighborhood park, and it would be a perfect place for a nature trail around that ravine. So I'm asking you to keep those. And that is, that's the only ones that I have any real concern about on your list, but I would like you to consider keeping those, those three parcels, because I think it's to the advantage of the city of Palatka and of the citizens of Palatka for you to keep those parcels.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vito Russo, and my official address is 415 Image Street. Just real briefly, what I'm gonna mention today is what I was going to, what I'm planning on speaking about on Monday at the CRA board meeting, but since it's on the agenda, I need to at least address it briefly. And that is, as you know, we are working very hard to establish the Palatka Porch Fest, music festival for the community. And it's, it is common in this country that neighborhoods and communities that are revitalizing themselves often are, the arts is a major contribution, major contributor to revitalizing the, the community. So this is not something that, this is something that's common throughout the country, and we're trying to bring that solution into this community. So as you well know, that we had the Porch Fest two years in a row, so this is, this will be the third year. And the Porch Fest is the first Saturday of December. We're going to need the space to have the Porch Fest. And as you know, Hammock Hall is the information center, and then the city owns the two lots adjacent to Hammock Hall. So we would like to preserve those two lots and create what I would call Hammock Hall Park, so that we can keep those properties from being developed and then using them for the music festival. Now, the music festival is a beautiful thing, as everybody that has attended is well aware. I mean, it is a beautiful, family-friendly event, and it is going to become one of the major musi, one of the major festivals for this community. So I would ask that the two lots adjacent to Hammock Hall be designated as Hammock Hall Park, so that we can keep them from being developed and use them for the vendors, et cetera, et cetera. So on Monday, at the CRA board meeting, I have a more detailed argument for keeping the properties and preserving the space for the music festival. So I was, please, please keep that in the, in your consideration when you think about those two pieces of property. So, thank you. Well, there's one, one last thing, and that is I am also here for the art league, so...
You got 10 seconds. That's not on the agenda right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment on item three C? Seeing no one, we'll close item three C. Is there any further discussion at this time?
We looked at the property that is on 11th and Olive Street, and I had asked you all and commissioners before you all to kind of hold up on it so that we, if we needed to put something forward to help us do the business incubator, it might be what we, we work enough to do our match. I know that the chambers has come up and said they, they want to take charge and do that, but I would like to ask that you all hold on to those couple of parcels there until we find out what's gonna be done to them, so that we'll have matching, enough to have matching, put something that will help a large number of people.
I'm in agreement with that. I'll also say that in looking at this list, there are a large number of parcels here under the surplus property, I think, which are needed for infill and further development. I don't think, I don't think the timing is right to dispose of these properties at this time. The 11th Street corridor in particular creates another opportunity for an additional business district, which once was a very thriving business district. I think the city's possession of those properties probably should not have gotten the, the other lot that was on the corner of 11th and Brunson to best packers at that time. But possessing the lots on the corridor from 11th and Madison to 11th and Brunson are very significant pieces as it relates to being able to have some control in creating business districts. Also, some of the more significant sized lots that we have, including lots on Edgemore, those are lots that I think are ripe for us to be able to pick and choose opportunities to come in to do significant infill as it relates to veteran housing or senior housing or some other type of opportunity. I just think that we should be kind of in a more of a holding pattern right now, and if any individuals come to us with opportunities to purchase, wanting to purchase city-owned property, they still can go through the proper channels to try to get that done and get it approved by the commission. But I think just disposing of all these lots without any plan for infill, particularly since one of our main parties is affordable housing as well, that's the business incubator, is just not the right time to surplus. And we can identify them at for surplus, but I also think that we need to make sure that the, the sale of those properties is, is something that's put into place by the commission based upon what the overall plans are. I talked to the city manager about how that even moving forward with this, with this initiative is still creates the opportunity for him to hold those properties and not dispose of them unless there's some consensus to do so.
Man, I'd like to say that I was really upset when I looked at what happened with the train station property. The property from the train station to Madison Street was just, I hope, I, I think we could get it back, just hand it over to the county and the bike folks for them to put the rail across it. Instead of them going around the edge of it or the one side of it, they went diagonal across and took that whole section of property. That property was bought years ago so that when we could get the Greyhound bus people to come back, they would have a place for their buses to turn around and to get in and out so that we could better serve the people with transportation. Right now, if they came back, you would have to help the town of Spook or Hinton by a way to get that bus line back in here. So we need to open up our vision wider, and before city manager does large parcels like that, I would like for him to make sure he either talks to each one of us or brings it back to our meeting, so that if it was a reason for it, then everybody knows about it and can do the best use of it.
Any other comments? Seeing none, put your motion.
Motion to dispose of these, or we're gonna hold these? I make a motion to hold these properties until we further identify the best use of these properties through development.
This motion on the floor is second, to deny, and that's just basically to deny the initiative that's in place?
Right, to deny the initiative that's in place.
So motion on the floor to deny three C. And there's a second, my right friend?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I, I, I ask that if some of those things, if you find a good use for it, to just bring it back to us when I leave and go forward with it. I just want to make sure the best possible use is being done for it. And I have a sentimental heart about the 11th Street car. If anybody wants to know what businesses were down there, they catch me and I'll, I'll bring them up, a date on all of the wonderful businesses we had in the downtown. I talked about it for Black History Month, and in, in this town and in the area, there were thirty black businesses owned during my childhood, and they go. So I'd like to see that come back.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, resolution authorizing the city staff to continue services with Inspired Technologies and allowing for execution of contracts to address IT solutions to include recurring management aspect as well as the project plan for networking computer upgrades for adoption.
You got our attitude, yeah, and you can change. You got something we want to tell us, though?
Let me let, Mr. Triggers read the caption first.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Palatka, Florida, accepting a proposal from Information Technologies IT company, Inspired Technologies, and authorizing the execution of a managed services contract agreement with Inspired Technologies, allowing for the mayor and or city manager and city court to execute and attest all necessary related documents.
Second. Question on the floor on the second. We're now on the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Commissioner Borum?
Sir?
Yeah, something, I thought you were about to say something.
No.
Okay. This, the contract is just a renewal of the, the same rates that we had before under the old contract, under the first contract, and that's what it is at this point.
Single year?
It's for a one-year term?
Right.
With the same eleven thousand dollars?
Right, the city manager, he'll, I mean, he'll just manage it going forward. I mean, we've kind of discussed some things in the background. No sense in bringing it forward here.
Any, any other discussion at this time? Seeing none, questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five of the agenda. Item five of the agenda, reporting recommendation of usage Tillman House Palatka Art League, nominal lease, city manager, Bill Shannan.
Yes, sir. I was asked to evaluate the current use of the Tillman House and see if it was actually the best use, and based on the plan for that area and the riverfront, I do not believe that currently that what is being used for is the best use. I, I have several recommendations. One would be turn the Tillman House into a welcome or visitor center that is eventually open seven days a week, which may be a gift shop or something that sells Palatka-themed items, or sell the property to an organization or a person whose goal would be to support the current waterfront plans with whatever activities they were going to put into the facility, restaurant, gift shop, or retail. In addition, I would recommend that due to the Lomera Art Center and the Palatka Art League having similar functions, they, I would recommend that they look at maybe joining forces of some of their art events. This, this decision is not based on the cost of the, to the city of Palatka or what is being paid by the Palatka Arts League. It's basically based on the planned growth in the waterfront area and the best use for that facility. Currently, the Palatka Art League has leasing the Tillman House for a dollar a year, and my research shows that there are several events that the, the facility is open. You have Holiday House, and that, that comes in four or five different things. You have cleanup for the Holiday House, you have prep for the Holiday House, you have gala night for the Holiday House with a food drive, and you have Holiday House food drive by itself, and, and it runs for approximately six weeks. It brings people from seven different counties, and they buy gas, food, lodging, and gifts. But most of them are coming from the local area, so I'm not sure how much that they'll be buying gas and food and things like that, seeing that they live pretty close by. They also have Angels for Angels. They have Azalea Days at the Ravine Gardens with Members Art Show. They have a yards, yard and bake sale. They do two of them per year, the bottle of garlic. They have a jewelry show and sales. They have kids summer arts program. In reference to the kids summer arts program, it costs a ten dollars per child for the first child, five dollars per child for any other children. They also give away two ten-dollar scholarships, and the PAX Karate also brings in eighty-five children for a one-day field trip, and I was briefed that they enrolled one hundred ninety-two people last year, but eighty-five of those were from that PAX Karate kids. The other events listed are sales programs, and it do bring in funds, some of which are used for the house itself. They also have several food fundraisers for food banks, marchedons, and the local church. I would recommend that the Palatka Art League and the city maybe work together to see if we can find them at another place that they can do what they do and open up the, the house for a more effective use for the city. Work with the Palatka Arts Council in reference to the kids summer arts program, possibly come up with a plan to still use the Tillman House for the Holiday House, and come up with other venues to help themselves some of the Members Arts, and that would be my recommendation.
Any question for the commission? I guess before we get into that, I've got a number of speaker cards here today. Deborah Daniels?
I'm going to decline.
My name is Laura Evans. I'm from the Palatka Art League. I'm the vice president of the Palatka Art League. Does anybody here like history? Are there any history buffs in the room? Do you like antiques or all things vintage? Do you like feeling like you're a part of something bigger than yourself? We at the Palatka Art League are making our own little piece of history with the Tillman House. In fact, this year, we are celebrating our twenty-fifth anniversary in the house alone. Did you know that between the years 2005 and 2008, the South Historic District helped fund it, the restoration and rehabilitation of the Tillman House to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? We pay for and perform all the maintenance and repairs on this property, except for the lawn mowing, which the city provides. In 2017, we paid out twelve hundred dollars in HVAC repairs. After fundraising in 2018, we had raised a little capital to fund some major repairs on windows, siding, and decking, which brings us up to last year, 2019, when we had repairs, maintenance, and termite mitigation performed to the tune of thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Where did that money come from? Our loyal supporters and patrons donations of goods and services, a percentage of all our artist's sales, and finally, our members' donations of labor, money, and supplies. Let me give an example. In the spring of 2019, Florida Pest Control and Douglas Products donated over six thousand dollars of their goods and services to tent our entire house and put an end to fourteen years of termite destruction. Not to be mean, but really, folks, does anybody in here believe that these companies and others I haven't mentioned would donate something of this nature to a city government versus a small cultural nonprofit organization? We would like to thank the city of Palatka for generously allowing us to occupy this historic home for a menial amount of rent. We couldn't do what we do without that benefit. That being said, we think our organization has been a pretty good steward of the Tillman House, which is the cornerstone of the South Historic District. If we are able to continue on the property, which apparently we can't, it'd be nice to have at least longer than one year. Our calendar is very full, and we plan our monthly activities a year in advance. March 21st, we have an art lab, which I was going to invite all of you to attend, where we have various artists showing their work, and you can actually participate in that art form. They brought calendars for each of you to show how much work we do at the Tillman House. But I think we'll probably be packing instead, as it turns out. But thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Can't yell over. Thought I could get this far without it. I'm Vicki Duke, 105 Carriage Terrace, Palatka, and I'm, I'm glad to hear, at least get to hear the rest. And I'm glad to hear, at least get to hear, the recommendation, and you did highlight a lot of the things that we do, too. But one of the things I think that, the things that we've offered the city, and I find it frustrating to be booted out of the house, is that the Christmas House is the only facility like that in Palaca. We opened up the house, and in Putnam County, that that's what we mainly focus on during that time period. People look forward to coming. We open it up, we have volunteers that are there seven days a week. It's open every day. We let them see the house. They see local artists, they eat, eat in our town, they shop locally. When y'all have that box where you fill out the receipts, we, our box is always full. Everybody loves to come, they look forward to doing their Christmas shopping there and supporting the local artists. And we are, some of us are fine artists, not me, but the others are crafters, and that's what's unique to us. The other art district in town, we don't qualify to be part of them because they're fine artists. Most of our, most of us came from being told we couldn't be part of them because we're not fine artists. So this was a unique plan, and we don't make a lot of money with this, but we do a service for the community. And we worked, while we were doing this, we worked with the historical district. Anytime they ask, will you open up when they're doing the historical homes? We're there to open it up and let people know that they can come in and look. And when the pilot club needs to do their luminaries, they came during our gala night and sold their luminaries, so we had that part with them. So we've always been involved with not just us, and then not just our club, but any club that would work with us wanted to be involved. And so we do, we do give a thousand-dollar scholarship every year to someone at the community college interested in the arts, and we support them, have to be local. And so we, you know, we do those things, and to look at being out on the street, and I hope that the city will help us if you choose to take the house from us, that you will help us find a place and help us be able to, because we can't, we can't afford something, we can't afford a lot of money. And we're, this has been our home for twenty-five years, and I think, I think we've been good stewards, and it's, it stinks to be kicked out on the street. Thank you.
All right. Allegra Kitchens. I'll come back to you.
Allegra Kitchens, 1027 South 12th Street, Palaca, Florida. I pulled my art scrapbook, and the earliest reference I found where I won an award for the Palaca Art League for a painting was 1972. The Palaca Art League has been a fixture in downtown Palaca since prior to 1973. I think they started probably in the sixties. I was one of the founding members. I think I was still in high school or just out of high school. I disagree. This is the highest and best use for this property, and it has been for the past twenty-five years. You all talk about bringing tourists downtown and having cultural affairs and cultural events. This is a cultural event, and it brings tourists downtown. The Palaca Art League was in existence long before the Greater Arts Council, the Arts Council of Greater Palaca, they're not the same thing. It's like comparing apples and tangerines. Similar, but different. And I think the city manager, I enjoyed what he said, because everything he said reinforced that this is exactly the highest and best use for this building. You don't want to have an office in there. You certainly don't want to tear it down and have a parking garage and whatever future plans. And I know what the plans for the riverfront originally were, because I was on the commission, and prior to that, I was a citizen, and I've seen the plans, and they have nothing to do with tearing down the Tillman House. Now, I understand also that there's votes groups meeting, and there's some kind of new plans in the works that the citizens don't know about yet. I'm sure, as Mayor Black used to say, what comes out doesn't come out in the worst, come out in the wind, so I think we'll find out about it. But this is the highest and best use for this building, and the Art League has been good stewards, and they put thousands and thousands of dollars in with the donations. If I'd been one of the people donating, and you all kicked the Art League out, I'd be wanting my money back. And I just, I think it's dead wrong, it's wrong for the city. Yes, the Christmas House is only a few months, a couple of months a year, but they bring seven thousand tourists downtown minimum, and that's what you all want. You say on the one hand, you want something to bring people downtown, then on the other hand, you say, oh, this is not the highest and best use, because we got something, we got something that we're going to do, but it's some plan in the future y'all will know about. Think about it long and hard. This is a draw, and after twenty-five years, the Palaca Art League is associated with the Tillman House. When people say Art League, they say Tillman House, when I say Tillman House, they say Art League. And I think you can't separate the two, and when you do, you're going to lose the efficacy of the Art League's draw to bring people in.
What's the word?
Efficiency, I guess. They leave. Efficacy, whatever you say. They bring people in because people, people, people look at the Art, oh, the Art League's for the Tillman House, Tillman House, Art League. It's open all year long, they have classes in there. I went to a pottery class a couple of years ago, learned how to make pots and plates and stuff. Loads of fun, by the way. But it is a very viable, very important part, and it is in the historic district, it's a historic building. Why in the world would you want to put in a bake shop? An office, which by the way, is prohibited under the current overlay in downtown Palaca before it straight down, offices are prohibited. So the highest of best use is the Palaca Art League, stay in that building, let them stay there. If you want to build your parking garage, build it aside, build it over there on the other side of the street, whatever the plans are for the riverfront, which the public doesn't know yet, these new plans that are being cooked somewhere in the city hall, which I've heard about through the rumor mill, I don't think the commission knows about it yet. Obviously, Don, he's got his head wrinkled, but I'm telling you. I'm telling you, the Palaca, the Palaca Great Line is better than CBS News. So, you know, we should stop on these tweets. But anyway, you need to keep, you need to keep the Art League in the Tillman House, it's a no-brainer, folks. I mean, seriously, it goes with everything you said. The city manager's argument against it is the very argument why you should keep it where it is, it is the highest and best use. Thank you.
That same Drake line that said that we were going to turn the golf course into public housing? Moving on, they're not always right. Moving on to Donna Forrest. I'm sorry, before we go to Donna Forrest, you can go ahead, Phil, I'm sorry. Just say your name and address for me.
Deborah Daniel, 14469 Northeast 210 Fort Road in Salt Springs. Good evening. This is not what I expected. I'd like to take time to tell you all about the Art League, but I have three minutes, and all the information about this has already been submitted to Mr. Shanahan. However, the league members have been under a lot of stress for the last three months, not knowing our fate, knowing that we cannot afford to go anyplace else and pay for prices. I was recently approached and told by this once member, and now yous know who it is, it's Mrs. Kitchens, okay? That she was a patron, she's now a patron of the Art League, came across pictures and evidence from the Art League show back in 1973. Yep, you do the math, that's forty-seven years. We're not going away. But this year is our twenty-fifth year in the Tillman House. Such a mess to be celebrating twenty-five years under this kind of a situation. We understand that we pay a minimal fee for at least the city, but in return, the house hasn't been kept and maintained by us in great condition. Took a lot of work, took a lot of effort, but we did it. I personally sat on the floor of that porch after it was done by Rawls Synergy and spent five hours on my hands and knees painting it. The city hasn't had to put any money into this property, except for cutting the grass, and oh, that cost us money, too, because the lawnkeeper severed our front lawn and ran into our front sign and broke it. This forty-seven-year-old business has been managed and run by its members. They're all volunteers. No one gets paid, but the rewards are phenomenal. Young children from our city enjoy a summer program of arts and crafts. People from seven counties visit our Holiday House, and some stay overnight at hotels, eat in our restaurants. A young graduate will receive a scholarship to help pay expenses upon entering the College of Low Arts right here in Palaca. The cruise ship that comes every year and docks at the public access manages to come visit us, the women can't wait. Our annual tea this year has tripled this year, and our Christmas in Putnam County ornament is a collectible for twenty-five years. We support Pinkout Putnam, Christian Servison, and many other organizations to the best of our ability and with funds available. The gracious donations of Florida Pest Control and Douglas Products, and many generous patrons who donate to us keep us up and running and have been very supportive to us. Yes, we're aware that the city needs money, and they want to bring more money in, but sometimes the community needs what money can't buy.
Donna Forrest?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, I'm from the Palaca Art League as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
These are my wonderful friends, Cheryl, my daughter, and my husband, David, behind me. I just want to let you know, I'm not a very elegant, weaker, but yesterday, my husband and I moved here twenty-one years ago, and we ended up being a part of the Palaca Art League twenty years ago. And as you can see, I'm not too together. As they say, I do what I can, but without the supportive people behind the Art League and the things that we do, and that they feel that I am welcome to this Art League, it means a lot. They take care of me, and I try to take care of them in my own way. If you take that away from me, I don't have much left, except my dear husband, which is quite, yeah, of course. But I have many friends that keep me plugging along and wanting to continue being an artist, and working with them together. I just don't feel very good. I know there's no place to go to in Palaca to call home, because that's what I called it for twenty-five years, or twenty, I should say. But I really don't know how to tell you how important a lot of people feel the Art League is to them as well, and that we just work so hard to make it important to Palaca and the people. I mean, when Holiday House comes around, everybody wants to know the date, and you know, it's their new people, new stuff, and, you know, it's two full floors. If you've never been, you'd see how beautiful it is and how just everything is so unique and so important to us to show the public. And gala night is always fun, we give away gift baskets and food and whatever. We're trying to be as part of the community as we can and to give to the community ourselves, because without us, there wouldn't be the Palaca Art League either. We don't make much of our time, much of our own supplies and money, just to make it beautiful and wonderful, and it is a part of the Tillman House. My husband and I have been president, and my big secretary now, this year coming up, is ten years for me. I think we can tell you, we know every nook and cranny and all the dead termites and all that stuff, because we've been there with so many different presidents and members of the Art League. Please, don't take it from us, please, just don't. It means that much, okay? And I'd be good to meet any of you on the night as I wanted to, but I'm really glad to see you're all working out. I appreciate that, thank you.
Kate McDaniel, you got to fill out a yellow card for me at some point, it's in the back of the room. If you promise to fill it out for me in return, I'll let you go.
I'll fill it out for you.
Give your name and address and step up to the podium.
Well, I was here last time, and I brought down two of my constituents here who did that for me tonight, so I'm going to keep myself composed. I'm seventy-four years old. I don't know how much longer I'll be able to contribute to that or be involved in it, but I enjoyed it, it's been great, I've learned a lot of things, and these people just pour their hearts out for the community and for everything that we do throughout the year. And I beseech you, please, let's stay in the Tillman House. I mean, people, like, the Les, Allegra Kitchens said, she said, we have been there for a long time, and we are so associated with that building. When he, like she's, when he's saying Palaca Art League, we're Palaca Art League, it's the Tillman House. And, I mean, the way it's situated and the way the house is set up, it's a very, very great arrangement, because we can lay our artwork in different places and set it up, and we do serve food on the night of the opening of the Holiday House, and we need the space to put out what we have. We have so many new types of art in there. I mean, we didn't have a lot of the things that we have now. We've brought in crafts, and we've brought in, like, LaRouche, she does quilts. We have people who do jewelry, like they said, we have, we try to focus on different months, and we try to have, you know, different shows and different things like that, and it helps these people, and it opens the city to the understanding of what these people do. And not having a place to put that or having to relocate is going to be dramatic. I don't know if we will be able to set up in time to do the Holiday House or any of our other things if we have to go somewhere else. So I think I'm going to stop there, and I just want you to consider keeping us there. We are an asset, we really are. People just, people know we are connected with that. So I thank you for letting me speak, and please, again, do try to keep us there. Thank you.
There in the back of the room, right on that counter. Is there anybody else? Come on. You can do it, you can fill that out if you thought. If you promise.
I didn't plan on speaking.
Most people do.
My name is Donna Beatty, 4048 Silver Lake Drive. You're going to have me, right? Palaca, Florida. I've been a resident here for eighteen months. The first place I came to was Goman House, and I try to go there as regularly as I can. I recently went to the tea and took a friend who didn't even know what a tea was, because, you know, she's a certain age, you know? And I don't mean older, I mean younger. And she was thrilled, and if it was, you just, I can't explain it to you, I just have to tell you that it was beautiful, the way it was all set up, the way they accommodated people, and they didn't charge anything, they asked for a donation. And as we all know, some people left some money and some people left nothing, but that's their choice. My question is, the Tillman House brings a lot to this community, okay? Not just adults, to children. So my question would be this, what are you going to put there that is going to do for this community what the Tillman House does? Are you going to have someone who gives children art lessons for ten dollars? All right? Are you going to have people come into town and... Are you gonna have people come into town and say, "Oh, I wanna go to the Tillman House"? All right? You talk about maybe making it a welcome center. I've been to our welcome center.
We actually haven't talked about making it an anything.
No, I know, but that's what it was mentioned, okay? It was mentioned as a welcome center. I've been to our welcome center. It's also not open seven days a week, okay? I believe what these older constituents have said. This is the best use of the Tillman Center, the Tillman House. It's a historic house. Art should be in a historic house, okay? To show what was from the past, because if we don't have our past, we have no future. Okay? I come originally, my accent, not my accent, but I'm recently from St. Petersburg, Florida.
I thought you were about to say South Carolina.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm from North Florida, actually. And I lived there for over 30 years and I saw what they did to their community, okay? That's one of the reasons I like this community, okay? In St. Petersburg, if it was built before 1950, oh, we gotta tear it down. We can't have that, okay? We gotta tear it down and put something up new and fancy. And thankfully, Palaka is not that way, okay? It's one of the things I like about Palaka. I lived in St. Augustine for two years too. That's a nightmare. All right? Palaka's controlled, people are friendly, they say hello to everybody, all right? This is my idea of living in a, in a town where people care, okay? And that's the reason you have so many people talking today, is because we care about the Tillman House, okay? Unless you have a better plan, and then the next thing would be, yeah, you're, they're only paying a dollar a year, okay? But they're maintaining the property. If you're gonna turn it into something else, it's gonna be on the city, which means it's gonna be on us, the taxpayers, okay? Because if you don't have a plan, okay? Who's gonna pay the bills? Who's gonna pay the freight? Who's gonna make sure that the roof stays good? Who's gonna continue with the termites, et cetera, et cetera, all right? You need to look at what it's gonna cost us in the long run, okay? Yeah, a dollar a year ain't much, but what are we paying, what are we giving to the community? Thank you.
We're good? Get a card for me. Thank you. All right. There's no one else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no one else, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment. We're gonna move on to discussion for the commission.
I'll say something. I mean, I, I think what the city manager did, I mean, he did what he was asked to do. He did his job, basically. He did, and, and I didn't see nowhere, none of the statements that he wanted to take the art league out of the Tillman House at all. I mean, he gave options. There was a number of options on the table as it related to what to do or what was considered. So I'd like to, you know, give him credit for that. And that's what the job is to do, to make sure that we're giving our citizens, that our taxpayers, the best that we have to offer. And you guys have came up with some compelling stories and, and, and these things are really, I mean, you're part of the fabric of this, of this building. I mean, you have 20, 20-plus years in the building. Maintaining it, helping the city out in terms of maintaining that property. You've got people who come, it's a draw, they come look, look for that event every year, multiple events. Is there any way that y'all can help with manning that with the number of people that you have? Just a little bit more availability to the community to have that, that location open?
We have. We are, we are.
We're gonna be working on that.
We're gonna be open one more day a month, a whole day to start with, because we're already open on weekends, two out of the month, so now it'll be three out of the month.
Well, I just appreciate that. I mean, all the things you guys have done, you're well, you're integrated into that building. I mean, you're part of that fabric. I wouldn't wanna see you go away, but, I mean, he did his job, he, you know, and so it was just options on the table. So my thing is, I would make a motion to try to keep y'all there and as long as you, you know, we're just a year-by-year contract or whatever, and I don't know how y'all are gonna do going forward in terms of manning that operation, but if you got enough people to do it, we really wanna continue that effort and continue to keep having people to come. But, you know, that's what we're looking for, people to promote Palaka.
Mr. Commissioner. This is not an easy, it's not easy. Things have happened that, you know, the individuals who sit before us have for this, for this Tillman House. And some of the recommendations that we've heard from the city manager, I have some questions. Even if, just say for instance, we were to take it, we were to overcome, you said to be open seven days a week, who's gonna man that? That means we're gonna have to hire somebody else or how is that gonna work? We had problems with the River Center or having somebody man the River Center. I did, or at least I would take into consideration not to make any decisions if they already planned out their calendar for the remainder of the year, that we not make any hasty moves, at least until year's end, simply because we don't know if the advertisement is already going out, we don't know if any of those things. But just from what I heard tonight, like, it would be hard for me to make a decision to displace the art league and it's, it's, it's hard.
I see, and looking out there at you all, I see more of y'all look like me. All right? And, but the other reason is that I do have some artistic stuff that I do. I would like to say that if we have a problem and we discuss it and work at it, we can solve anything. We can do it together. There are some things that he mentioned in giving us better uses for the center. Like, we talked, I talked to him before. He, he didn't come here to take the center from me. He did what we don't need to do. He's new to us. We went out and found somebody from somewhere else with a new set of eyes to make this city work better for us. It doesn't mean everything he brings back to us, because after everybody on this, up here, sitting up here was born here, except Lucas, and he married into a family that was born here. So we all know all of the things that the city needs and wants and wants to do and that we are here to take care of people. And everything we do, we can't always charge for, but we can work at it. Actually, that Tillman House, when it was bought, y'all wouldn't wanna get it. The property was bought for a parking lot. We had a city manager who said, "I don't, we can't afford to get out of the house, so we'll let somebody use it." And y'all just happily use it for 25 years. And that's how, that's how it got there. If they'd torn it down when we first got it, it would be a parking lot now. But I talked with the city manager about it, 'cause I did have some concerns. And if, I think we sat there and to get together, some little things like, if you come to Palaka, you can't find a thing in Palaka if you're a tourist, the body that says Palaka. Okay? Think about it, John. Oh, that great challenge to that. It oughta be someplace, and maybe that's a, a niche that you all can fill, if, if somebody wants to do, do something, that they have a souvenir from Palaka.
We do. We do. 25 years.
We need to, we need to let people know, because I have friends come and families come and if I wanna give them something, I don't have anything that tells us we're the gem of St. John. I, I don't think that anybody, I think that sometimes we read the paper and we have a new editor and new people at the newspaper who are not from here. They do not know us. And if they knew us better, they might word some of their reporting a little differently. I think what it did is it put a scare into, to our citizens that somebody wanted to think, "And y'all go there tomorrow and all this stuff be sitting on the curb." That's not true. We are looking for all of our properties and looking at them for better use. He made some suggestions that maybe some of them can mail, or what y'all are already doing. It might help to have more people there to help demand it and do some other things. I would like to suggest to you all, before we get all upset, let's, let's talk about it.
Go away, I stopped others.
I know you're upset, but you know, sometimes, you're a parent and we have, our kids do stuff that we're upset about, but when we get with them and, and, and talk about it, we get to work it out. And I think this is something that can be worked out and get our city manager to, to know us better and you all to know him. Right now, we've been very happy with all the things he's tried to, to move forward with. And, and so, y'all get ready for what you're ready for. Nobody can celebrate. I don't think nobody could get ready to vote the, the celebration. And I think before he got rid of it like that, he had to talk to them. He just didn't go do that.
We've extended invitations on various events that we've had for you all to see it, and no one has come.
The last time you had it, when I was out of town, I was in Texas.
I wanna say something, and I don't wanna prolong it, and thanks for the invitation. We did get an invitation the last time that you all had the tee party, and unfortunately, my mother had to have surgery and I personally spoke with you and told you that I would try to come, but I couldn't make it. I don't wanna prolong this, but I do wanna ask, you all did, you all did a great job at sharing the impact that Palaka, that the Palaka Art League has had on the community. I was sat, sat in a little bit with your presentation, because I wanna see your calendar. I want you to share your calendar of events with us, and that, that's just one of the questions I have, if you don't mind sharing that with us. And if we can, if we can build a, a partnership and find out how we can help in this process and, and consider the options that the city manager presented for us tonight.
Well, I just wanna say one thing, Bill, that you taught us something. You were asking for metrics that we did not have, 'cause we've never had to do that before. And we are willing to do that going forward. One of the things, to give an example what that means, is he wanted to know where people are coming from and how many. And so now we have a guest book and we're asking our guests to sign in with their zip code and an email, so that we can remind them of the next event. We've never had to do that before. Right. And so these are some of the things that could make us better.
And bigger.
Going forward, but we've never been asked that before. You know, when you ask for information going back three years, it took like two months worth of time, every time you responded back to us and asked for more questions, because we never had to keep those type of records before. So I have to say that what you asked us to do will make us better and stronger.
It was a learning for us.
I'd like, I'd like to say something too. I wanna tell you a little thing that y'all invited them to have a come. Recently, I have, but I even had a grandchild I sent and went to one of your class. Okay? I have been over to visit, but some of you all might have not been. I've been sitting in this seat quite a while. Do you understand that we are overwhelmed with trying to do this job? It's a part-time job for us and we get invitations, we get invitations everywhere, plus some of us have to work and it is, it is very hard to make a lot of things.
Could we have a meeting with you? Set up a meeting and talk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Because this has become a full-time job for us too.
Yeah, if the commissioner okay with this, I would, that'd be great. And we're available too. We're available, we're not, can't stock it on page.
I live on the corner of Nineteenth St. John, right across from the Dairy Queen. My house is the easiest place to get in and park in. You all, I don't know if I can find it in my phone, 'cause I don't do really good with the phone, but I'd like to show you some of the artistic stuff that I, I do and let you know, but it's not, it's not that we don't realize how much we need it. We know it's needed. It's just that we were looking at what should make us better. And that's what our city manager was doing.
But we wanna thank you for your appreciation, for your consideration and for giving us a chance to talk.
I just wanted to, to say I, I didn't mention that, you know, as far as, you know, feeling and feeding the public from our art league, you know, every year we have made ornaments. I think it was mentioned briefly, but it's about every single thing in Putnam County you can imagine, and we've redone it by our own artwork, you know? It's not like pictures of the picture or anything like that, it's all hand drawn and done. And people come from all over to collect them. And, you know, it's a big collection effort. And, you know, I just wanted you to know, we do all these things up here and we don't really realize, oh, what we're doing to get the people to come in and, you know, to remember our name. And it's really, I think, important for everyone to be a part of that as well. I don't know if any of you have seen our ornaments or not, but they're, they're very creative.
For 25 years, what we've done is identified a building in Palaka, Putnam County, a majority of them in Palaka, and have an artist rendering done of it and then the ornaments made and then people collect them.
And we only. Last year was City Hall. Last year was City Hall. This year was Women's Club of Palaka.
Anybody else in the commission?
Thank you.
Any other kind of thing in the commission? I sat quiet the whole time. And one reason I sat quiet is to listen, because what I hear is passion, what I hear is energy, what I hear is love. And so, the only issue and the real problem is, my, I only have one question. Where was the Arts League before the Tillman House?
In the building.
I know, you know the answer.
That used to be. Yeah. It was a, was an electric building down by the river where the clock is.
It was the Florida Power.
Right there.
Just to the left of the clock tower.
Man, after the Arts League left that building, did they continue to exist?
Yes.
I think that's when they went to the building.
So what I've heard, and this is me, so did everybody talk, it's my turn to talk. So what I've heard is, you guys have associated the art league with a building. It's not the building that makes the art league, it's the passion, it's the love, it's the art, it's the people, it's the stuff that you guys did for the young lady who came here 18 months ago. And as long as you continually associate your gift with a building, it's gonna be a problem, 'cause one day the Tillman House may fall down. But that same league is gonna continue to exist. It existed in FPL, it existed somewhere else. The issue is, we, us with compassion, we're not gonna say, "Get out and go on the streets" without trying to find a landing place. The Bridge Club, for a number of years, has been in the old Team Town building. The Bridge Club still exists to this day, but the Team Town building is now housed by Heart Putnam and it's housed by a drop-in center which deals with mental health. So change is uncomfortable for a lot of folks. But the one thing that happens is this. You guys love Palaka, we love Palaka, there's an opportunity for a partnership and dialogue. Had, we never ever said anything about assessing the use of the Tillman House, you've given off your game. The reality is, there are opportunities to get better and sometimes it takes that little threat to make you go back and reevaluate yourself. And the thing that we see is, there may be bigger and greater things associated with the growth of the art league that may cause you to outgrow the Tillman House. But right now, your mindset is stuck inside of that great building. It's not the great building that creates the greatness of your organization that's allowed you to sustain for more than 47 years. It's the art and it's the people, but y'all miss that, because you fixed on the building, because you homesteaded. The building's a dollar, there's a greater use for that building in my opinion, but there's not a greater use for the passion that's in this room and the potential partnership that continues to exist. I hadn't seen half of y'all in the meeting. I hadn't seen 90% of y'all in the meeting, ever, to say, "Hey, this is what we're doing. We're gonna invite you to the Holiday House." But as soon as there's a threat on your homestead, then all of a sudden, everybody wants to come tell us how great you are. I shouldn't have to sit here on this diet, as nor should Ms. Brown, who's been here 36 years, and wonder about some of your programming. We should know. Some of the stuff we don't know, and it's not your fault, we don't do a great job advertising some of that stuff, but what I'm saying is, this is an opportunity to do what we continually say every time we sit on this diet, that we're better together. It's an opportunity to create partnerships, it's an opportunity to look at what we've built in the organization. It may be an opportunity to create something different, because the tee can still go on. It didn't, the tee's not necessarily had to be housed at the, at the Tillman House. The Holiday House doesn't necessarily have to be there. We got other buildings around here, there are other partnerships, the Cali- We got other buildings around here, there are other partnerships, the county has stuff that's out there sitting empty. But you can do events, but again, I let you talk the whole time, let me talk. So, we did this thing, so there's an opportunity, there's an opportunity to do all that stuff. Not to say that you still can't do something in the historic district. Who said it couldn't be at, at the Hymen Hall or somewhere else? I'm just throwing out stuff, I'm saying, I'm talking. So, we're going through all of that stuff. And what we're doing at this point is, we're just brainstorming. But there's an opportunity for us all to sit down at a table and try to find an answer to what's going on. But a one-year lease means that you only can be there for a year, and it has to be discussed on a regular basis. That one-year lease came up twenty-five years ago, and all of a sudden, people got comfortable. And one, in twenty-five years of doing retail sales, you haven't come up with enough money to get your own building. You haven't come up with enough money to pay a lease or do any of this other stuff, because you never thought about it. But here we are today, discussing this, discussing this situation. And it's an issue. There's a recommendation that has a higher investment use, I agree with the recommendation. I think it's time for us to look at alternatives throughout this city. This is an entire city with a bunch of vacant buildings in downtown, throughout the city, which serve the same historic purpose. And we got another building called Alarama Art Center, which, from what I heard, at some point, these two organizations work together. And so, well, that's the problem, maybe it's time to work together. And so, if y'all love art, maybe it's time to come together. There's no need to have two basketball teams with the same jersey. And so, I just think that there's a great opportunity for us all to look at collaborative partnerships for things that we love, which is ours. And so, let's look at that. So that, my recommendation is that we accept the city manager's recommendation that, that this lease is going to terminate, but that we don't look at it until at least a hundred and eighty days. We go through an exit strategy and come back to the commission with an exit strategy on how we deal with that. So that it's not an immediate impact to you, that you get through your calendar and the stuff that you're doing. So, that's my thought process, anything for the commission?
So you're letting us have a.
I'm letting the commission discuss what's going on. I, my goal is, my, my, my personal opinion is that you guys be able to continue out through this calendar year so that you can do Holiday House and everything else that you have in place. And at the end, on December thirty-first, that we, that we've already created some exit strategy. That's, that, I'm just one vote, I'm usually the weakest vote on this team, because they, most of the decisions are made before it gets to me. But that's just my, that's my recommendation, and, but I'll listen to the commission, and I'll throw that out just as a recommendation. Any discussion, any motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to sit and, and talk with them and see if we can make stuff better.
Okay.
My recommendation.
And I know, it may be, it may be that, that they'll find a way to, it may be not. It may be that we can get other programs going or, uh, find a way to, to make it, make our programs better. That's what we're here for. We say we want tourism, and we've got buildings here now that when tourists come, there's nobody there to mend them and to do it. And I would like to see us, um, sit down and have a talk, a plan, uh, talk to the manager and see if we can make the stuff work and work better. That's just my.
Anybody else? Sounds a lot like what I just said, anybody else? Make a motion or it can fail for lack of any motion. There's still going to be that same one-year lease. But it'll be month to month at this point. So, you guys tell me what you want to do?
Well, the, it was, it was motion, it was a, it was a, I know, but it was recommendations made.
That's not a recommendation, that's a motion.
No, I'm just saying, there were recommendations that the city manager had that was an array of things, and we have not voted on. We're not going to vote on all of it, it got to be one thing, if we're going to approve their lease for the, through the end of the year, and we can come back and revisit that. But he made recommendations, that's what the recommendation was.
The recommendations don't have to be, the recommendations don't really, can be put into place, separated apart from what the highest ambitions. It's, it's whatever you guys decide.
I, I'd like to say, let's, let's give them another year there, and we get together, sit there, and see if we can either make it better or let them understand it's time for them to move on.
Twenty-five years.
If we can, well, that twenty-five years, it's not very long, darling.
That long?
No, no.
It's months.
It is, but we just sat here this long. That, I made the motion that we let them go at for another, uh, year, and probably, um, sit down and look there, and we can have them do a workshop or have the city manager and some of us get together and get with them too. And whatever decision is made at the end of that period, then that will be what, what should be done. And either you all will be there for another year, or you'll be moving into your own, another building. It may be, it's a blessing, because, uh, on Washington Street, my grandmother had three, had five houses over there, and the housing authority said they, they wanted them. They didn't give us a chance, because they know they took them, they took the property. So, what we're saying now is, any way that we can work them into better.
Second, second motion.
I don't understand the motion. So the motion, so the, is the motion for them to remain throughout this calendar year or for another year, which takes them into March? Which takes them into February, twenty eighth of next year?
Well, whenever their renewal begins.
Their renewal was in, was on December thirty-first.
So what's the motion for?
Is it for the calendar year, for, till December thirty-first?
Well, we are being, figuring something out by December thirty first, I think.
You can't figure, I, well, that's your motion. Got a motion on the floor to, uh, continue their lease until December thirty-first. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion for the second, unreadiness, I have other readiness. Because we're saying extend the lease until December thirty-first without anything in place as to how we discuss what happens next. Is there exit strategy? Is there, uh, an extension strategy? What are you doing in the interim besides just killing Tyler?
I didn't say just kill Tyler, I said sit down and communicate with them, city manager, and all of us, and see if we can come up with the best possible way to, to get this done.
And I would like to schedule a meeting with one of them too.
The city.
We can have work, have a workshop, or we could have a workshop, or more than one workshop.
If we have a workshop.
There's going to be a bunch of talking about the same stuff.
If we have a workshop, we need to make sure that we not only bring up the Tillman House, but bring up every other property that we've already, um, asked for this kind of thing about. Like, I'm not, we not going to spend a whole workshop on Tillman House.
But you're talking about, he's going through every property, that has a dollar lease. Has an all-lease.
Bring up to that one again.
We'll be here for six hours.
Well, I think, we have not.
Whatever it takes, I, I just want to have a conversation and sit down, and I would like to believe with the city manager. But whatever it takes, if it wants to be the most efficient way to do it, let's, let's come up with something. Come to this, go back and forth. Meet with the city manager first?
But we also know, and, and, and then completely honest and transparent, like, we, we need to set a plan, because we let them, we talk about it, and then go to the bathroom.
Until it's Tyler and he's dressing again.
Right, so we need to have a plan.
Well, you got to have a past certain, something got to be done by December the thirty-first. So we got to get together and.
The city manager has been given direction to.
No one's been given, at this point, there's a motion on the floor. That's all we got.
Well, you specifically stated that we need to give the city manager, uh, a direction as it relates to what we're going to do going forward. That's, that's what we're saying.
On this project?
You just said we need to come up with an exit strategy.
Yeah, on what we're currently talking about. I, that's what I thought I heard.
Did we get a second on that motion?
Yeah.
Yes, commission of all.
So the motion on the floor is second, or extending to December thirty-first?
With a workshop.
With a workshop to take place with it. But then what period time? I wouldn't, because I don't want to be in a position where there's a determination that there's going to be an exit strategy, and they're looking at, at thirty days to get away. I don't want that to happen at all. I don't want that to be the situation.
That will be a part of.
I don't want us to come up here and say, oh, it's, it's December first, now we're talking exit strategy. I don't want that to be the case.
Thirty days, thirty to forty-five days.
Yeah, that.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Brown?
I meet with them within the next two weeks and collecting up information.
A workshop, a third, a workshop to be scheduled within thirty days, is that okay with you, Commissioner Ball?
That's great.
So we've got.
Meet with the manager within two weeks. Workshop in thirty days.
Could I meet, could I, you all give a permission to sit down with the city manager? And, um, as, as he talked about that, since I have some issue about, about the blue.
And you said workshop in thirty days, mayor, that's what we say.
Yeah, meet with the city manager in two weeks.
Worked it thirty days.
Workshop in thirty days.
Scheduled within thirty days.
Scheduled, well.
We'll do our best to be as quick as possible.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? And Vice Mayor, everybody has the opportunity to meet with the city manager on this.
Okay.
The motion is to extend the lease to December thirty-first, a workshop to be scheduled within thirty days.
I believe in the city manager.
Everybody meets with it, all the commission has the opportunity to meet the city manager and let them know what their concerns are.
Question?
All in favor, stay aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries four to one. Thank you, guys, for coming in. Moving on to number six, request for staff direction on employee benefits RFP to seek employee benefits. Broker, carrier, combo, or just employee benefits carrier.
Oh, ma, mayor, before we jump like that, y'all said we have been to C U O, but y'all haven't been to C L P. I would like to have, I would like to have some of y'all would sit in here with us. Thank you.
Moving on to number six. Request staff direction on employee benefits RFP to seek employee benefits for a broker, carrier, combo, or just employee benefits carrier.
Yeah, our goal is basically the, we have looked at the contract for quite a few years, and the goal is basically to, to look at it and figure out what the best way to go for the citizens of, and, uh, employees. Employees for the services, citizens for the cost. So we look at both ways.
Any other questions?
No, sir, actually, we have a RFP that's ready to go out. We just need to make sure we get the, uh, precise direction in terms of how you guys want us to go, if it's just the broker, or if it's the broker and the insurance as well.
And so basically, who is currently the broker, did we have a question?
That is correct.
When's the last time I was with it?
Fourteen, I think it was, thirteen or fourteen.
Mr. Bates, how long have you guys been a broker on this?
Since nineteen ninety-three.
Nineteen ninety-three. And. Comments, questions, concerns? What's your direction on the commission?
You said that you want to put it out for legal, or what do you think?
What's that recommendation?
And what staff recommend?
Yeah, we would like to look at either, we'd like to look at both of them, employee benefits, broker, carrier, and a employee benefit carrier, and just to see which is the most beneficial. I, I would assume that for us to do it, and the, being local, we have a good, a good job at it. We just want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the, for our citizens.
Local preference, we still apply?
Yes.
Yes.
Focus is within five percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have two, uh, broker, carrier, and just broker only, right?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So.
Mr. Bates, can you come up for a second? Can you give us the distinction between the two? Young Mr. Bates, I'll let you move on.
He's talking fast, he's talking up.
Thank you, thank you, Benji Bates. Yes, sir, Bates employee. So, um, currently, uh, we're the agent broker, and then at the, the carrier is Florida Blue. So, you have the option to go out and, like I said, replace your broker who represents you with the carriers. Or then, I believe there is also the option to go out, um, we would work with the city staff to issue an RFP to look at different carriers, whether that's United Healthcare, Florida Blue, Aetna, Cigna, different carriers. Not just on the health, Leah Cities as well, not just on the health insurance, but also the dental and vision. It's been a while since that's happened, um, but, I mean, when we look back the last three years, we've averaged four and a half percent rate increases. And we've also worked at the time with Florida Blue to come up with a profit sharing plan. I don't have the exact numbers, I think there's close to two hundred, do you know, Mr. Shanahan? I think about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the employee benefits reserve that we've worked, um, over the last three to four years to build that up. Um, so obviously, we have it, I think, you know, that comes a time to look at those things. We respect the, you know, the purchasing recommendations and authority of the city. Um, it was bid a couple of years ago, uh, two thousand and fourteen. Um, city at that time made the recommendation, you know, to stay with Bates employee. When you look at this, and I do understand that, um, in the city of Palaka, you know, we do handle other, other contracts with governmental entities, just a water, the schoolwork contract. And, um, unfortunately, there's not, when you think of either locally owned family business in Palaka to handle employee benefits, there aren't many other competing forms, so that does limit it. And I, you know, it kind of, you know, it kind of becomes, I think, sometimes, we get the perception a lot that, oh, it's just you guys, and it's Florida Blue. And it's not that we work with every other carrier, but we've seen in the past that they have responded and won bids. Um, just locally, the county's done two bids in a, or, excuse me, the county's done three bids in the last three years. The school board's done two bids, the water management did a bid, and Florida Blue was awarded, um, that business. So, I mean, I, we, we work on them. Uh, last year, there was no rate increase for the first time in a while, and then there's also that profit sharing check. So I feel confident, looking back the last three years of kind of what we've been through, um, with the city to deliver those strong rates, and also help build up that contingency fund that didn't exist. So, I mean, I, again, I'd like to continue to work with you guys and, like, put a, put a, put a carrier bid out and let us go to market and look and see what's out there. Also, I just do want to say, I've never really said this publicly, but I'll go ahead and say it. When it comes to our compensation, uh, we are paid at a commission. And I do understand that the perception of that is that rates go up, we get paid more. But a couple of years ago, back when I, whenever we were going through some time for the city, I made a commitment to Matt, and I said, you know, it shouldn't be this way. So what we do is, every couple of years, we actually roll our feet back, um, because I don't, I don't want us to, you know, it be perceived that we profit when rates go up. So we do, we have done that, I've never said that publicly, but I've always worked with, you know, that time the finance department to make sure that was done.
I'm saying, everything he's saying is spot on, there's, there's nothing he's saying that I disagree. The whole thing is, at the end of this, we just want to be able to make sure that our commission and our citizens know that we look at everything. I don't overly expect the change, but I, I just want to be able to tell our citizens that we've done our due diligence.
Again, you know, I, I mean, I think, um, with, with them being local too, that local purpose.
Yes.
Um, I don't see anything going, um, south with just us, you know, doing the RFP, check, you know, just checking the rates. Uh, we still have the, the decision, they hire people local here, so, um, we, it, there's a payback here for our, for our community in terms of, uh, looking at outside, we'd be happy to see what they have to offer. But at the same time, we, we still would like to get what they, what, and put the rates out there and just understand what's coming back, and we have a final decision. So, we certainly, uh, thank y'all for all the years y'all, y'all have, uh, served us and, um, gave, or gave back to us, uh, with rolling the rates back and different things looking out for us, because you don't get that from many agencies.
Any other kind of thing, commission?
So what, you, you think we're going to take the blue?
What's the motion, I mean, what's the second commission, your motion?
This is motion to do the, the broker, broker, carrier, just to see.
This is, there's a motion on the floor about Commissioner Ball, if I understand it correctly, to put an RFP for broker and carrier?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion on the floor by Commissioner Ball for broker, carrier, is there a second?
I second it, I, I just want to see, um, whoever y'all with.
Motion on the floor, broker, motion, motion on the floor is a second by Vice Mayor Brown. Any further discussion or comment from the commission? The question's called, all in favor, say aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries three to. Move forward. Moving forward on the agenda. This is item seven, city manager administrative report, I'll come to your last this time. Uh, chief, you got anything? Chief, you got anything? Wanna roll up here? Captain Luke, you wanna take up a spot? No, we're good. Got anything from this bar? Chief? Uh, Mr. Griffith is in the back. You got anything? Where the boats? Uh, Ms. Triggers? Ms. Robinson has just snuck out of the room.
We have employment opportunities at the wastewater treatment plant, sanitation department, fire department, finance department, and planning.
Yes.
So we are seeking employment resumes, applications, apply online at city of Palaca backslash jobs. Bring your applications into city hall or HR at palaca-fl.gov.
Call HR at?
Three eight six, three two nine zero one hundred.
Three eight six, three two nine zero one hundred, extension?
Two one eight.
Two eighteen. For those of you who don't have it yet.
I tried. Oh, yes. We are, we've put together, we've tried to update our policies. But it's nineteen ninety-six is when the policy went into eighty-six, so it's about thirty-two years old. We're waiting on some information from the finance department to drop into the policy. Once we have that done, we'll have it ready for you guys to review in about the next week or week and a half. Thank you.
Mr. Shanahan?
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
Of course, I left my glasses up there, so I'm gonna have to do this by, oh, thank you. You know you're getting old. We have created a tour and destination committee. And basically, what they're doing is they've, they've come together and they are looking, what does being a tourism destination mean? You know, in ten years, what does that mean for the city of Palaca? And once we've identified that and we're on board with that, then we're going to come up with a process over the next several years on how to get there. And hopefully, that will spur with economic development in other areas as we start having other people come down and visit. And, you know, we will put that together. We will bring it to the commission and we will make sure that you're on board with it. And then hopefully, that'll become a part of our processes and one of our goals. I have basically completed my hundred day information. So what I'm planning to do is tomorrow, send you all a, a, a report on what I have discovered and give you the opportunity to read through it. And then a couple of weeks out, we'll meet together and we'll talk about it. And then hopefully identify a vision statement and goals and objectives for the next couple of years. And this is coming in at the right time because it's at the beginning of the budget process, which means whatever you all come up with becomes a part of our budget and the budget is the yearly plan. So we'll be able to set metrics to make sure that we're doing it. And the, the only other thing I've got is, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a Facebook and please look at it. And when you have functions or stuff that are city related, let us know and we can get that stuff put on the Facebook and get it out to the more people that know about it, the more people that come visit. Thank you for your time.
Hey, can you give us a, right quick, y'all, if I'm in there, on the, on the recycling?
Yes, ma'am.
Business up there, and I think you have that number for EPA to read into the minutes.
Ah, I do. There was, there was a meeting, first of all, we keep putting in beautiful and our public works have been scheduled to meet at several schools and they're gonna be talking about recycling. They're gonna be talking about why it's important and why the children should get on board with it. And we have found and statistics prove that if the children come home and start telling mom and dad, you shouldn't do that, a lot of times, dad, dad stopped doing that. And so we think that's a good way to go. In addition to that, we've met with Dr. Woods and we will be going out and doing a train to trainer class to get their folks on board with picking up trash, recycling, and keeping the areas clean. So a lot of things going with that. And those processes, what, next three weeks, four weeks?
I'm doing the process at nine twenty, and so it'll be right before the cleanup. It's not even city focused, it's a community focus. And then we're looking at actually having the parents come in for those, the twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, twenty eighth after schools. And they're being the other trainer with me.
So you're gonna be training the trainer, the parents is train the trainer, is that what you're saying?
They're.
Leader. Family man trained.
Lead to train. Champion leaders in the community, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What school will she be at? What schools will you be at?
I will be at Mosley. I will be at Kelly Smith. This is not in any particular order, it's a distinct level. And at James Day Long and Miss Libby's school.
Mellon.
Mellon, thank you.
Well, two, two of the schools that you named, I have after school sites there. So I'll be willing to send out the information to the parents that I have a hundred kids in the after school program at Mosley and at Kelly Smith. So we can work together and get the words ready.
And second grade is what they need.
Thank you.
And one of the questions that we have been asked, if someone has a complaint for EPA, how do they get up with them? And I've got the phone number. It's eight hundred four two four eight eight zero two. And I, and the, the only other thing that I've, I've got is, once I have met with the commission and we've gone through the hundred days information and we've set goals, please invite me to your organizations, your associations, so I can come and bring this information to you. Because your commission wants you to know what we're doing, why we're doing it, and, and what we're gonna do to make it happen. So please, we will announce it in Facebook that it's open. I will be contacting people. And if you invite me, I can come and I can talk about what we're doing. And I think it's real important, we spend your money, and I think it's real important that you know why we're spending it and how we're spending it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casco?
I just wanna thank the Palaca RFP for staying for the duration of the meeting. I'm looking forward to engaging with you all a bit more and, and building partnerships.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, just two quick things. One, I want to bring up, I remember the mayor mentioning a couple of these probably months ago about starting a coalition that was looking for the homelessness of the city. I wanna see what we are on that. I also wanna see what we are on the requests for, this is also happened a couple of weeks ago, where I requested that we see where rentals are. Since the rate changes, if it was something that's been beneficial to us as a city, or is it something that we need to revisit? I have my feelings that it's not, but I would like to see that in writing and I would like to see that something that we present to the public as well. I think Ms. Becker has, especially hard to clear that up. Commissioner Moore?
All right, yes, to speak to that, I did get information back from the city manager from the, I think, from our rentals person, I don't know what's his name, Muston. I I've received that information, but I, I thought it went out to everybody in terms of the cost of rates and the rentals. That information is already an email form out that should be sent back out to everybody on the commission as it relates to that. Because I had questions around that as well. So from what I'm looking at, is it is not beneficial what we did in terms of increasing those rates. And because rentals went down, in my opinion, and also revenue went down, but the cost went up. So that's where we're at. I passed that information along. So I think we did a disservice to the community. Anytime you create a policy or anything like that, you need to come back and revisit and look and see, is it doing the, the community a service or disservice? And I think in disrespect, if not doing the community a service. So that information need to be disseminated through the commission as a whole. The other thing I have, well, at least the city of Palaca would be partnering with the Florida Wildlife and Wildlife Commission to have a boater safety course coming up, March seventh, from nine to four thirty. This time is gonna be with a boater certificate. So we have over nine hundred and fifty thousand marine vessels on, you know, that's registered in the state of Florida. And out of that, six hundred or so people have accidents. And out of that, about sixty people lose their life as a result of fatalities, I mean, in boating accidents or whatever. So we do have this class coming up on March seventh at the St. John River Center. And it's open and available to everybody. If you were born after nineteen eighty-eight, you, you must have a boater certificate. So for the people who are older than that, you still probably need to have some form of boater's safety education. Because I was born before that, so I was able to be grandfathered in. I was grandfathered in, but I didn't know how to operate a, a, a water vessel, but I was allowed to do that. So we have all of these people who are out there on the waterway allowed to just operate a, a vessel, and they got grandfathered in. So this class would be a, a, a good opportunity for people to come out and get a boater certificate. And I have some flyers in the back. If you'd like to grab it, we got the event on our Facebook page and that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell just barely made it. That's what you know.
What's that?
Eighty-four to eighty-six.
Oh. Scary.
I almost in high school.
But that's, that's, that's all I have.
That's all you got?
That's it.
You like it? You finally made the cut.
Yeah, this is on, this is on Facebook, Betty, I think she put it on Facebook.
It's something to register.
We have some hard copies in the back, in the back. And, and let me see.
Can you get some fingerprints of the people born after eighty-eight, born before eighty-eight? So.
I'll put it on Facebook.
Again, thank you all. On the homelessness workshop, the detective task force, we're waiting. I've invited Mayor Derek Kendrick to Daytona over. They like to just get some information that relates to homelessness. And I, I really wanna try to get somebody from Daytona to come in here to give us some information that relates to that. Aside from that, it's a, it's comfortable time with Palaca. We've had a wonderful seven bits with our Bassmaster League tournament, as well as the FFW fishing tournament. Great turnouts for both of those from Palaca. Even with canceling the first two days of the fishing tournament, there was still a, a great turnout as it related overall to that and economic impact of that are astronomical. There's also been some serious conversation about sports tourism, you know, you guys heard me talk about that. What was once a ninety billion dollar industry in two thousand fourteen is now a twenty billion dollar industry. Ironically enough, I was talking to the CEO of the Florida Sports Foundation. I said, well, what would you recommend us to do from a sports tourism standpoint to create some significant revenue and stand out from the crowd? She said ice hockey. And I said, ice hockey in Florida? So we found out that ice hockey is becoming a very popular thing in the state of Florida. People from the, from Canada, everywhere, they're coming down. And they are spending several days in Florida with these events. And she says, my recommendation is that you get as many sheets of ice, put an indoor facility, and you'll be surprised the number of people that will come here. When that happens, there are issues that we don't have enough van space for them. And so there are a lot of things that are out there as it relates to what's going on. Look at your legislation on short term rental and the approaches that are out there. And Palaca, we've got to get on board. We're dealing with those issues that are out there. So we need to start looking at short term rental policies and figure out what we wanna be as it relates to inviting people in and, and the advent of short term rentals. It's actually been beneficial to us when we look at some of the mental sacrifices that we've had coming. So those are things that are out there. Outside of that, I'm glad that we have contractual issues because it's the only time I see bodies and seats. I, I can really get frustrated at the fact that nobody's ever here. And it's only when things start to affect them individually that they actually come into this commission. People can't be elected and not be held accountable. And if we continually do that, we'll continually get what we've been getting. So if you wanna get what you've been getting, we keep doing what you've been doing. With that being said, we're a firm.